What's good over in Windsor Heights these days?
Beautiful day.
Yeah.
The fireworks slowed down.
Joining the meeting.
They stopped after the fourth. We didn't have any calls on the fifth, so. Everybody gets all wound up.
We still had them in Des Moines on the eighth at 10:30 at night.
Well, that's the problem is a lot of our people that call, they just call and say they hear them. And they could be Des Moines, Urbana, or.
Could be anywhere.
Yeah. I think we had 27 calls, but like 14 of them were, uh, the officer didn't find anything. So they were probably outside the city.
Yeah.
And then four, four or five were from one lady who's outside with her neighbors. And thinks they're targeting her. And the officer, like I said, outside her house for 30 minutes. They never shot off anything. It was somewhere else, so.
10:30, I'm watching the stories. I don't want to be disturbed with.
I was gonna say, I'm surprised you're still up.
Fireworks with the young people.
Were the young people still up?
I mean, we hear the kids, like now that school's out, walking up and downtown Alonda every night of the week and.
Nothing better to do.
Yep.
I smelled some smoke in my house the other day and I've got an old house and I thought that, you know, something was very wrong. It was coming out of the air conditioning system until I thought to go check outside and realize that it was just all the fireworks in the neighborhood.
We have an old house too and the fireplace has, we have not used it yet since we moved in there, but it still smells smoky and, um, it alarmed my husband the other day and I was like, where have you been? Like depending on where you're sitting in this room, you're going to smell it. Um, it's just an old house.
Should've called the fire department and gave him something to do. They enjoy getting to go drive around.
One time I couldn't smell something, I thought, this is, it's gas. I can smell gas. I can smell gas. And, uh, my husband was like, what are you talking about? I would have called the utilities. I'd be sure I could smell gas. Open windows and everything to keep it air and out. And they came and sure enough, my hot water heater had it.
They got it out?
Oh, no.
It doesn't take much.
Yeah.
All right, we've got one more person I know for sure is coming.
Well, you said three, so you've got five minutes.
Yeah, yep.
We are gonna tape record it so that we make sure we get everybody's comments correctly.
Just.
Speak up.
So I'm aware as a general preference, do you prefer written comments over oral comments or?
This is our first time doing it.
Okay.
Written comments are always better in terms of, you know, having something that we can refer back.
Sure.
But, you know, you can do either or both.
We're recording. The recording that we're making now.
That's going.
Give me your email. I'll have, uh, when you just pass it, I'll have.
We're sure our people will show up. We don't have a conference room that's specifically dedicated to us.
Yeah.
I'm sure the DNR will use one of the ones on the first floor.
I'll just.
I think you're better than that.
We'll use the first floor one once that was done, on the first floor of this building.
We already submitted these?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Robert, I don't think I've ever seen you without a suit on.
I know, it's the new me.
This is your summer to look, right?
That is right and, uh, I had other stuff going on today and so didn't take that route. But I appreciate that you did and Doug took the kind of hybrid approach and I wanted to make sure we knew what season it was.
Was it golf and other stuff?
I can't golf anymore, so.
No?
I've got a herniated disc between, so actually, actually this morning I was getting more injections done. So I didn't really like going back to changing into a suit after that and.
No, probably not.
So. Golf and bowling are out.
Well, probably snowboarding.
Probably a lot of things. The, the bowling is because that's what everybody seems to want to do for a work event. And then golf was a very fun pastime.
Right. I knew you liked to do that.
Used to really enjoy it, but the body doesn't twist right now. We'll see if we can get back there. I'm gonna have to take up low impact swimming, you know, just kind of floating and going down.
Need to go to like aquatics class with some old beers and that'll be more your speed.
I didn't know West Des Moines Pool.
Water aerobics.
They get in the, the lazy river and they walk the opposite direction to lazy river. My mom's like, my friends invited me to the senior group. I'm like, well, can I go?
Good idea.
Sounds like my speed.
You like to have a beer while you do that? Could that sound like a bad?
Bars along there.
Just bring your own water bottle.
Hey, it's a, it's a city-owned pool now.
Oh, okay.
Follow all the rules.
I probably do have rules.
And it's a, what is, what's the, not king cup, what are the, uh, the double walled metal ones that nobody can see in? The Yetis. There you go. Bring yourself a Yeti out there.
Yeah.
Doug, I don't think you've got this.
Then it doesn't count.
Right.
Um, are the comments gonna be limited by time? Like?
We don't have a specific rule on time.
Okay.
We wouldn't be done by four though.
Yeah, what to say?
Yeah.
No, but you know, some other public hearings, it's like two minutes per person. And I was like, okay, I'm gonna defer on yield all my time to these gentlemen.
Hello? Someone's joining the meeting. Um, to your comment, I think we are going to have a lot of comments that are in a similar vein. So I will ask people, if you have a comment and you feel like someone else has covered it fully, you know, feel free to not hash it out again.
Well, Alex is here, I'm out.
Think of it as a subcommittee meeting.
Oh, we don't wanna do that.
Only we're letting you sit.
It couldn't get heated.
Yeah, I'd never want to be the one.
Joining the meeting.
I wanna sit, I wanna sit kind of way back against the wall.
Hello, who's joining us?
This is Alan.
Alan?
That'd be Alan Kemp from the Iowa League of Cities.
Okay.
Never heard of him.
Probably making sure I showed up. Alan, I am here.
Joining the meeting.
Kristy Harshberger with ISA.
Joining the meeting.
Suzie Neering.
A couple more minutes.
Well, you've got a good view here.
We do. It's a little noisy though, if there's people downstairs. Cause it's not well sealed.
It's.
It used to be non-existent.
Exactly.
Well, it's not on the upper floors. It's not on the upper floors.
The glass is on the upper floors?
No, it's not.
Yeah, there was never a glass.
I know, this is.
When I was here, 20 some years ago.
Yeah, we put that in the walls in when we moved in and nine years ago.
Doug, how was the air quality in this building when you were here?
It was not good. Heating completely was horrible. The, uh, cold air, okay, in the winter or the summer, the cold air would come through these types of things. My office for one week was at the bottom of the larbarium.
Yeah.
And the, the air would fall all those floors down and then rush across the basement. So you were freezing to death in there year round and you had to have paperweights on everything because it blew it off your heads.
Oh, wow.
That was.
Yeah, like I don't think we have any, any, um, AC or heat in here.
So this used to be the walkway? Like an open walkway?
Now it was open down into these, these areas.
Oh, I didn't know there was a hallway that maybe it.
It was just like that. That's what it looked like before we put the.
And it, and it's like that as you look up.
Yeah. Keep people from falling off, um, but.
Or jumping. We were all thinking it, but.
Joining the meeting. Mary Radke.
I think you can probably look at, I've got three up too.
All right. Can I have your email quick? Uh, so I don't forget that. It's long?
No, that's okay.
I put my school on too. Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, thank you everyone to coming to the public hearing. Um, we were not required to do a public hearing, but we wanted to. We anticipated there would be a lot of feedback, a lot of comments. And we wanted to really get input from the community, um, get feedback from stakeholders. Um, I think we, we've received a lot of feedback and we're very open to comments. We're very open to suggestions and so hopefully this can be a productive discussion. Just to run through the rule pretty quickly, just the high points. Um, we're repealing, a rescinding sub-rule 2.16 that the board can at any time order remedial action. This would surpass the normal process that we have for complainants. And so this kind of gives extra power to the board to just order remedial action without going through the normal steps. So we wanted to get rid of this rule in order to ensure that complainants and respondents did have kind of the proper process that's in place. Uh, the next is to rescind and reserve rule 4.17. So this is, uh, dealing with withdrawals where a party requesting a contested case may withdraw that. That is part of kind of the uniform agency rules, but it doesn't work for us because in our case, the board is the only party who is requesting a contested case. So it doesn't make sense for us to withdraw our own case. We don't need statutory authority to do that. We can go ahead and do that. Um.
Is your recorder turned on?
It is, yes. Uh, for the timeliness rules, we have the two-day acknowledgement. We have prompt processing of the request, reasons that are acceptable for delay. Uh, we discuss gathering multiple records, factors affecting timely compliance, and examining a record without charge. Um, I'm gonna ask our direct, executive director, Margaret. Unfortunately, I wasn't here when the board first considered the rule and, um, came up with the reasons for wanting to adopt the rule. So if Margaret could give kind of a brief history of the rule and what, why the board decided to adopt this rule.
And, uh, our, our board has three different committees and one of which is the rules committee. And we, board committees meet infrequently and usually it's, it's directed by, determined by some task. So last year, we had a number of complaints where nobody acknowledged the complaint. And it kind of left the person asked, or not acknowledged the record request. It left the person who had actually made the record request sort of in limbo, you know? We have a 60-day timeframe in order to file a complaint with us. So they were at Conley and saying, well, when does that 60 days start? I haven't heard of work. And we had somewhere it was months, you know, four or five months. And it wasn't until they actually filed a complaint that anybody acknowledged that the record request had even been received. So we were just trying to figure out a way to, um, avoid that and try to, to get communication going quickly so that when something, a record request comes in, then you have your custodian immediately saying, I got it. You know, we have it here and we're going to be working on it, um, or we need this. Or, you know, just start that communication. We had a best practices, part of one of our FAQs on this that recommended this and said, you know, we found that once the communication started, a lot of them were taken care of pretty quickly. And so it was just a matter of one time it was on the wrong desk, one time it was put in the, put in a mailbox that, that nobody checked, you know, so just where it went and so forth. Or somebody quit and left it laying on their desk and didn't pass that information on. So that was the reason for enration out. So we had a number of committee meetings where we talked about the language and where do we start? And this is where we, where they came up with an idea to start from. It went to the board. The board discussed it and said, yeah, let's go forward and, and initiate a rule that would address that issue and hopefully keep us from having as many complaints filed where, you know, communication would have taken care of it pretty quickly.
All right. Yeah, my goal is to have an open dialogue. My goal is to focus on problem solving. So any suggestions you have are absolutely welcome or any criticisms are welcome too. Um, I'm gonna have everyone go around the room and introduce themselves, um, if you want to speak or not, and then what organizations you represent.
Start here.
Go ahead.
Doug Strike, uh, here on behalf of the City of Waukegan and the City of Des Moines. Uh, they both submitted comment letters. If anybody wants a copy of the comment letter, I brought copies. I'd, I'd love to have some comments on the rule. If you wanna just go through them, maybe that would address some of the questions others have had. If you think they're along that line, or we'll just go around introducing ourselves.
Let's, let's go around and then, um, if you, if you have comments you wanna make, I'll note that. And then we can kind of go around the room as such.
I'm Claire Salzma. I'm here on behalf of Bridge Entry Law Firm. And we have multiple clients that we represent that are interested in outcome today. I will not be speaking though.
Okay.
Megan Malloy, I'm, uh, here with the Iowa Police Chiefs Association. Um, also have several local government clients. However, um, my colleagues who are present here and on the phone will probably bring forward the same concerns that my local governments would. So these are just for the, um, Police Chiefs Association. Uh, we do have some comments from both of the chiefs, um, whenever it's our turn to take the floor.
Sounds good, yeah.
I'm Craig Stone. I'm representing the Iowa Police Chiefs Association as the legislative chair.
Chad McCusky, I'm representing the City of Windsor Heights, um, and then I'll piggyback on the Iowa Police Chiefs Association.
All right.
I'm Margaret Johnson, executive director, and I've already spoken.
Robert Palmer with the Iowa League of Cities, uh, representing the Iowa League of Cities. And we would like to speak when the opportunity is provided.
Okay.
And Alex Kutchy on behalf of the Iowa Association of Municipal Utilities.
And on the phone, um, I'm here, we have Alan. Can you introduce yourself and what organizations you're representing and if you would like time to speak?
I'm Alan Kemp. I'm the executive director for the Iowa League of Cities. I'm just listening in. Robert will be representing the league's position.
Okay. Kristy Harshberger, do you wish to speak?
Good afternoon. I'm Kristy Harshberger. I'm the general counsel for the Iowa State Association of Counties. Um, we've submitted written comments, but I can certainly summarize those when the opportunity arises if that's helpful.
Okay. Suzie Neering.
Yes, uh, I'm representing, um, Johnson County. Um, I am also a member of the association, Iowa Association of County Attorneys, but my comments are more specifically from my perspective as a Johnson County Assistant County Attorney. And I would like to speak today. I've also submitted written comments.
And, uh, Mary Radke. Ms. Radke, are you on the phone? Yeah, we can leave it at that. All right. Doug, you wanna start us off?
Sure. Try and get through these fairly, fairly quickly. First with, uh, 11-2-22-1, uh, a couple of questions, uh, came, came to mind here. Uh, first is, what is receipt? So, you know, receipt by the lawful custodian, so, um, and then acting within two days roughly for all of those things. The City of Des Moines determines their lawful custodian to be the, um, the city council. And they have actually a records coordinator who handles things. Um, for them, uh, it would be quite a while before the city council receives them. It would be sooner for the, uh, rules, the, uh, request coordinator. So they would request that, uh, it include a, and they provided language on including a, a coordinator instead of the lawful custodian. The City of Waukegan asks what is, what is receipt and also when is it deemed to be a request? Iowa Code provides that a city is able to provide for their constituents a mechanism to make these requests. And so if they have a process out of mind utilizing what the City of Waukegan has, they have a process where you can either go to the city clerk for general business, the police chief for police business, and the fire chief for fire business. And then a form that provides the requisite information. And this kind of transitions with, uh, 11-3, 11.3, the processing piece. I'm sorry, not 11-3, 11-2-1E on the social media requests. Um, if someone is requesting it through social media, that's not to a records coordinator. Uh, it's not to the legal custodian. It's not to something that would be actively monitored for these types of requests. And it comes in a format that doesn't comply with what we're statutorily able and not changed in this, um, rule to, to provide for responding to these. So as, uh, the director pointed out, this is about facilitating information exchange. My clients, and I believe everybody in the room, has a process for facilitating that. How do we best direct individuals to that process to begin that kind of communication? I think it would be the antithesis of this if, uh, using social media as an example, uh, somebody posts on the city's Facebook page, something that looks perilously close to a request, but it's not acted upon because it's not actively maintained. I think we're going the opposite direction in providing that. So we, we have some, some concern in particular with, with adding in, uh, social media because it's not monitored. Those are, those are, sorry, working off two documents here. Uh, the last piece for the City of Waukegan deals with the fees provision in 11-7. This is also brought up by the City of Des Moines. Uh, that I believe is, is, uh, captured from Iowa Code. Is it 22-8?
The fee is from, um.
No, it isn't. I think it's in three.
Yeah.
In three, 22-3. Uh, that provision is captured from it, but it, it neglects to have the first clause of the sentence, which is paraphrasing here, notwithstanding other provisions of law. Uh, we believe that that causes some confusion, um, where now individuals who don't take the time to go to Iowa Code, where there are at least three references that I found in a quick search where cities are allowed to charge a fee in particular for providing a space and providing supervision, especially when you're maintaining, uh, chain of custody items. You're allowed to charge a fee, yet this would give them an administrative rule that reads contrary to that. So we'd suggest, uh, if we're gonna quote that, that we'd quote the entire sentence, not, uh, keep out the first clause. Uh, and the final one here, uh, from the City of Des Moines is, um, about anonymous complaints. They, they have a concern here. If you have someone who makes an anonymous request or they, I'm sorry, they make an anonymous complaint, uh, that someone's not acted upon their, uh, request for records, how is a respondent able to respond? Because you can't be provided the name of the individual who made the request and we track everything based upon their name. So it'd be very difficult to, to break that down and actually show you, uh, or the board how we had complied with that, so.
And on the anonymous complaints and anyone else can chime in here. Do you know where that came from? Because that's not something.
I don't know where that came from. I saw it in their letter. But in their, I saw it in their, their comment and they, uh, we discussed a little bit earlier. They did not, uh, provide me with any, uh, background on where that came from.
Is that a concern? I think that that might be a little bit confusion. Um, the board is considering a rule regarding anonymous complaints, but we're really in the infancy of considering that.
Joining the meeting.
We're just working ahead and I forgive you for being.
Mary Radke.
There's, there was one more, one more item from the City of Des Moines that involves the 10 days and 20 days in 11-4-4.
Right.
Believe the code and your, um, determinations previously have limited that 20 days and 10 days to just one specific area and that's what's in 11-4-4. Would request some clarity that the 20 days and 10 days apply. Again, clarifying that that only applies to 11-4, which has been, which would be consistent with your previous determinations. And it's not something where it's misread or misinterpreted by an ALJ to apply to 1, 2, or 3. In particular, where we're trying to get in front of a court to get an injunction and someone's trying to throw a 20-day timeline on us. Thank you, counsel.
All right. Megan?
Yes, um, so the Police Chiefs Association agrees with several points that my colleague, um, Mr. Strike brought up. Um, especially what does receipt mean? You know, on Instagram, for example, you can like sit on someone's DM and it just says that it's sent but not seen. Not that I would ever do that or anyone here would ever do such a thing. However, it's, it's just how the app operates. Um, but beyond what does receipt mean, we also have concerns about the, the time management and the resources that this will take. A lot of our police departments have not only their own social media accounts, but they belong to other ones. I'm gonna defer the rest of my time to Chief Stallman, um, to give his prepared remarks.
The Iowa Police Chiefs Association agrees that government bodies, including agencies within those bodies, like law enforcement departments, should consider residents' public records requests a high priority. And it's not against the concept of acknowledgement of such a request being issued to the requesting resident. However, a two-day, two-business-day deadline will put a strain on government body resources, particularly in urban areas. Add a little to that. Most of those agencies, that chief of police is, the administration, the operations, the human resources department, they're the whole thing. It's, it'd be almost impossible for them to answer in two days, let alone brave and know that they have this and then be able to get everything together. Even if it is for an acknowledgement, not the actual record fulfillment. The added conditions varying for each means of request adds more man-hours and confusion to this process. Five to seven business days is a more workable timeframe. The most troubling one, however, is the social media. This is overly broad and will be impossible. This is overly broad and will be impossible to comply with, especially for larger departments. This rule is currently written, essentially makes comments on Instagram or Facebook posts a public records request. This puts some departments in a position of either having someone frequently check social media, taking away from other resources, or not allowing people to comment on social media at all. The social media clause is vague. Does it include direct messages, retweets, and retweets, et cetera? IPCA believes there are more workable methods that are clearer and not as time-consuming to accomplish these goals. We recommend a slightly longer acknowledgement window and would recommend removing the social media avenue from public records requests entirely. I could, I can tell you on an Altoona post, two-hundred-thousand people reached six, seven, eight-hundred comments. There would be zero, I would have to turn comments off. I'd either have to eliminate social media, or I would have to turn comments off, and that flies in the face of community policing. If anybody ever takes the time and you want to check out our Facebook, uh, that is how we connect with our community. And to not have that, we just become a post site. Nothing else. We make a post, and then we're not paying attention to it. But the burden we would have on that, there's no way we could cover that many posts, that many comments on our posts. And then the other, I don't know if this was taken into consideration. Just off of the top of my head, we belong to eleven other Facebook groups in our city. Each community, Tuscany, um, Brookhaven, all the community Facebook pages, we also belong to those. We don't monitor those frequently. But if we have information that we need to get out, it, we would remove ourselves from all of those community Facebook pages. We just wouldn't partake in them. We wouldn't be able to.
So, you use those other community pages as a way for the department to post things on those pages? That is...
More so for those communities to send a message or something back to us. So, my PIO will on occasion get on those sites, check them. She tracks them. She tries to follow them that are on there. So, we know what's happening in the community, and, and most of it's quality of life issues. Everybody knows, we just got through the Fourth of July. It was overwhelming, the number of those areas that posted. And to that point, somebody that says on there, you know, "I wonder how many tickets we wrote", is that an open records request to us? Do I now got to fulfill that? What happens when I miss that? I don't even see that post come back to me. So, it's vi, those are really important to us, and being able to stay on the comments is equally as important. I think that you would just see a lot of agencies shut that down.
I want to, in particular, thank both of you for those comments. I did not realize how we, how you used social media in that way, and how detrimental it would be to have to turn, either turn them off or to monitor that huge number of comments.
And I'm old. I, I know Facebook and Twitter, we belong to like six es, other social media platforms that my PIO is on. That, and that's how you, kids don't communicate with us on Facebook and Twitter. They're on whatever, Snapchat and TikTok, and I, and I'm probably not even right on what I'm talking about here. But we belong to all of those. And again, that's just overwhelming for us to be able to monitor all of that.
So, I submitted, uh, a written letter, as well as our city authored by our mayor, and just to highlight, uh, the one from my portion of it. I serve as both the police chief and the fire chief for the city of Windsor Heights. The police department has its own, uh, social media. The fire department has its own social media. We're a small organization. I have seven full-time people on the fireside and fourteen, including myself, on the police side. And to echo Chief Stallman's comments, there is no way, uh, that I would be able to keep up with the comments coming through and, and read them. And one example of that, that I noted in my written letter, um, was from Des Moines Police Department, from the Des Moines Police Department Facebook page. June third, eleven forty-five, they made a post. This is a single post at a single moment in time on a single day. Four-hundred-and-twenty, four-hundred-and-thirty-nine comments and one-hundred-and-eighteen shares. And it appears that this wording would require us to read and vet every single one of those comments, plus every comment on every one of the one-hundred-and-eighteen shared pages. And it's just simply, it is, it's, it's impossible.
I don't think you'd even be able to get into the other shares.
Well, some you can't because you can't see them.
Right.
You know, to Chief Stallman's point, uh, you know, there, there's so much out there, and I'll bring up Nextdoor as a, uh, an example. If you're familiar with Nextdoor, they're community neighborhoods. Windsor Heights is a community of one-point-four-one square miles. We have like fifteen neighborhoods on Nextdoor. Makes no sense. But we cannot see what people post as a government organization on Nextdoor. They can message us, but we can't see the posts. So, if somebody were to get on Nextdoor and have a conversation with their neighbor and ask for the number of tickets written, and then come back and file a complaint with IPID saying that we didn't address it, we can't even see it. And then again, that goes back to the question of what is receipt? So, I would encourage, uh, the board to, to remove the social media aspect of it. Simply, it, it's overwhelming from a, a manpower standpoint. And then on the two-day notice, I would incur with the other comments that, um, that, for a lot of us that are small organizations that don't have a lot of staff, it is, um, detrimental, and, and it would create problems, uh, and probably extra workload for IPID that may not be necessary.
Um, on the two-day, you said five to seven days would be more reasonable. Are there any other, any other date ranges that...
And it's just a suggestion we threw out. We're not, we would like to hear what our, our colleagues have to say. It was just a suggestion to kind of get the conversation rolling on it.
So, in my mayor's letter that was sent in, he was a proponent of, um, Code Section twenty-two-point-eight subsection four subsection E that already requires responses to open records requests within ten days, um, to twenty-day deadline. And I believe that his position is that it should be the ten-day, which is already in code, and it gives us time to process and respond, even just the, "We've got this", and it's going to take us a little longer to get it to you.
Okay. That, the ten-day to twenty-day is, um, there's case precedent on that, that that is not actually like a hard and fast rule for twenty-two. I'm sure some of you at least know that. But ten to twenty days seems like a more workable timeframe?
Ten business days, you're talking about two weeks.
Right.
I, I think that's, that's more reasonable. And with our social media comments, with my social media comments, you know, it, I am a proponent of sharing and transparency, and, and we, I think, do a good job of that. But I think you need to fall back, as I noted in my letter, to what's reasonable and practical. And I, I think we got a little off of that with the social media part in particular on this.
I think some new technology, if I could add to it, is you have the Ring system, and you have the Flock system, and these are neighborhood security systems that allow us as a law enforcement agency on those platforms, we can put alerts out on it, but we can also see somebody broke into my car last night, stuff like. There's a comments section on it. So, would this fall underneath the, your requirements of us having to monitor that also?
I guess I'm not...
Their security, so their camera systems.
It's like the Ring camera than you, okay.
Yeah, there's two of them, one called Flock and one called Ring. They invite us to be a part of those as a law enforcement agency. So, we can get that type of information.
I have one of them, chief, and I will get a, a notice that there was, you know, there, there is a, a strange-looking character walking through the street, or I found someone, or my car was broken into last night. So, the, "Gosh, did you see all those fireworks? How many tickets were written last night?"
So, is that something that would fall under your rules that has open records?
It just keeps coming through all day.
What is shared with the police stuff?
That right there, that video, that comment.
They might have to join that.
It allows us to respond quicker to incidents in neighborhoods.
But we don't, the, the crux here is we don't actively follow that. So, if we have an incident and we know that's out there, we can go get it. But we don't have somebody sitting there watching that.
So, is, is it both video and comments?
Some people post a video and a comment.
Like, "Hey, I saw someone sketchy outside." So, okay, so it's both video and comments. Okay.
And it would be, it, that would be, without a definition of social media, it would fall under that.
Right, yeah, okay.
By other means. I mean, so, it's by other means, including social media. So, the other means is the grand category, which certainly this, that would fall under. Didn't mean to speak ahead of my comments, but...
No, you're fine.
Certainly agree.
Good point, chief. Thank you.
Um, one more question for you, Chief McCloskey. You mentioned if there was a specific record sent directly to an organization, is there, are you guys, are you open to having it narrowly defined so that it's an individual making like a direct message to a particular person?
So, I think that, after listening to his comments at the beginning, I'm not sure that that's going to be, uh, viable because, as, as pointed out, it's not going necessarily to be a records custodian. In our case, those comments would be, if it's on the police side, they'd be seen by myself, my captain, my lieutenant. If they're on the fireside, they'd be seen by myself and my captain. Neither, none of those people are our official city custodian, which is the clerk. So, that person wouldn't ever see them, wouldn't get them. So, if your code is looking to get to notification of the clerk, then that's not going to work because that's not notification of clerk.
Okay.
So, we try to provide that. We have a records@altoona pd dot com that we encourage people that want open records requests to go to. Don't, don't message us or, you know, we, we try to answer them any way they come in. We bend over backwards on forum. We got a little problem with people now using this, uh, open records request to try and bear, I'll give you an example. I just had an open record, records request for the history of all of our videos and reports, in our entire history. I don't know how long that will take me to put together and how much that would cost. But, I mean, it's, there's no logic behind that, other than an individual that's upset with us. So, how does that work if you, he posted that on Facebook?
Right. I guess there was another concern that I read in a lot of comments, um, was that people are using, uh, public records requests as a means to harass a government body.
Yes, that buries us. Yeah, that's true.
Okay.
Consistently, yes.
Universal.
That is not a exception to the rule. That is a consistent practice occurring across the state in cities of all sizes from both in-state and out-of-state actors. And I would also add, it's not always harassment from out-of-state, although it certainly can be. That can be the collection of data, and they repackage and then sell.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've had a lot of that.
And it stretches far beyond. I mean, you're talking about, um, disgruntled former employees that, I mean, there, there's all kinds of stuff out there that people request on, that it is a, a huge resource. It ties up resources for a long time, um, with very little, if any, public good, which is what the rule is meant to, to score.
Okay. That's good.
I'd like to add that, that by creating this additional requirement, it just provides another tool for people to use this process as a harassment means rather than a way to gain access to public information. Especially with that very restrictive two-day, there's a lot of things about this that require a very high level of strict compliance, and it would just, uh, make it much easier for it to be, uh, the process to be used for improper purposes.
And can I ask...
And that's Susie Neering.
Can I ask who, who's speaking?
Uh, Susie Neering from Johnson County Attorney's Office.
All right. Thank you, Susie.
It becomes a gotcha.
Sure.
Well, and that's, that's, I don't want to waste your time and, and not get to you, but one of the, the concerns that I have as an administrator is, if we don't comply, what happens? And so, if somebody comes and sues me because I didn't see a comment on Facebook that I should have complied with, and that gets me in my agency in hot water or bad publicity, either way is no good. And, you know, that's part of what's not outlined here, is what happens if, if that's not met. And, um, you know, that definitely is a concern. I'm sure Chief Stallman... Because we, there's environmental factors we deal with already. You know, we don't need to add another one to, to that.
Can you mute? Somebody's speaking very loud. If you're not speaking, can you mute your microphone?
There, there you go.
There we go. And I felt I like, I felt like I spoke too loud. Go ahead, Robert.
Yeah, well, thank you. Robert Palmer with the Iowa League of Cities. Uh, you know, I would start by saying, I, I appreciate the thoroughness of thought that, that was put into this. I see thought when I see things like, uh, that it was, um, you know, opened with mail rather than received. I think that, I know that your board had kind of looked at that, and so there was some thought. I also would tell you that, you know, I don't, uh, envy the job of trying to put forth a statewide standard that impacts every single city across the state because when you do that, what seems like it is consistent from the state level is not going to be consistent when we get to the local level. And I want to highlight just kind of what we're looking at here. We have more than seven-hundred-and-seventy cities in the state that are below two-thousand in population, and we have more than five-hundred cities that are below five-hundred in population. And I don't say this in any way to disparage larger communities. I want you to understand that when we start talking about the difficulties that some of these, these medium or larger-sized communities have, when you begin looking at a city of five-hundred or below, and, and we do have a city in the state of about eighteen people, which would be put under the same legal parameters and requirements as, as all others under this rule, the, the things like the definition of whether it's business days or working days become really important. So, a ten-days means that if I am a clerk that only works for a few hours on one day a week, which is common in this state of small communities, she may come in for her two hours with already having duties and things that she needs to do, maybe gets the mail, opens it, but now either has to work beyond that, and she may need to be in another city for the remainder of that afternoon, or you started a two-day timeline when she only works, just as an example, she already, on Tuesdays from one to four. And I use that because those are actual parameters in the state of Iowa that we have clerks in cities that don't have, uh, the breadth of administrative bodies that require full staff, but they are operating, and they would be under this rule, and they do have information which would be subject to an open records request, and so it would be triggered. So, I highlight the size of cities because when you're doing this, it, it's certainly an unimpeachable position to try and make something that works for all. I think one of the places we're coming from, and we, we certainly agree, I mean, this is important to the public. We were not in any way, uh, opposed to information and transparency with the public. But, you know, Margaret said something, or Director Johnson, I hope, subcommittee rules, right? Said something earlier that I think really speaks to what we're talking about here, which is there was a mailbox that simply wasn't being checked. And when we think about the, all cities, I mean, cities are not operating with a ton of extra staff anywhere in the state, whether we look at the bigger cities or the smallest. What we don't want to do is create a ton of mailboxes, particularly those that are burdensome, or they may not be checking constantly, that now they need to be checking. And so, I may have paper mail. I may have a phone call. I may have somebody coming into my clerk's desk. And now I have a multitude of social media platforms, which I won't hit on too, but I, I think it's been well, uh, discussed so far. But that's a significant concern to us. And I think that, I was going to make the same point, that guidance would be very reasonable to tell them to turn off all interface via social media because otherwise you have to begin monitoring that. And we would need to hire full, basically, public communications experts in small communities to handle social media that you're talking about, Twitter, Facebook. But I've got another example that occurred to me. When we're talking about the public having awareness, and transparency, I believe, involves the public understanding what processes are even there for them. So, it's avoiding confusion. On Reddit, which I don't know if anybody gets on, there is a Des Moines Reddit page. I do not believe that the city of Des Moines controls that Des Moines Reddit page. But how does a member of the public know that? The page is there solely to discuss the city of Des Moines. And I'm sure consistent pages like that could be on Facebook and others. And yet, we're trying to convey to the public that you have an important role. You want information. We want to provide that to you as a public body. But we need to be clear in how that can be done in a way that they understand because if everybody knows the rules and there's a defined strategy to do so, that makes it easier for them to participate in the process. So, I, I would, uh, say that we agree with all of the concerns with social media, and, and we would strongly encourage that, that, uh... E be removed. I think that it's, it's wide open. I think saying that it's big F to drive a truck through is, you know, we'd have to find a pretty big truck to even make that reasonable, because by other means, I don't know what that means. And I'm not trying to be too joking here, but if I put a bat signal up that says, I want to know more about how you paid for X, Y, Z, what is other means and what will that mean moving into the future? And that includes social media, but it's broader than that. And so I think that opens the mind to creativity in a way that doesn't give proper guidance to the public. I also think as we're looking at definitions, again, I mentioned that I appreciate the usage of the word opened, because I think that, in talk with Conformant, I know that was thought given to that. When we do fax, and I don't want to harp on this too much because I'm not sure if anybody still uses fax.
They do.
There is. And my understanding, and I know that it can be digitized, but some of the older fax machines, the fax just came through. So when we have a word like received there, is that similar to the word open, meaning it's received by a human being who pulled that document off of a fax machine? Or does that mean that the fax has printed into a physical office location? And that might not be monitored, again, if you only have staff working in one day a week. It printed Tuesday night, he or she is not coming back as a clerk until the following Monday, but has that been received or not? So that's one area where I think a definition may need to be tightened up. We would ask that, that a, in writing, acknowledged in writing, I think that in many areas of the law, we contemplate a modern reading of in writing to include electronic communications. We would like that to be more clear. If we are emailed, we think that an email, an electronic communication response is appropriate and proper. That may just be the contact information we're given. So we'd like for that to be clear, that electronic communication is what you mean, or is included in that definition of acknowledged in writing. The, and if, I think some of these concerns will go away if we get rid of E as it relates to, to social media. But where contact information has been provided, if that's a social media request, as we've discussed at length, is that the contact information, the, it came from John Smith at Twitter, and now does he actually need to provide contact information? Or is it assumed that because there is a, a return address, so to speak, because we know what Twitter handle sent it, is that the contact information? Which then raises up the questions about anonymous records requests, because there's no guarantee, if that is the contact information for that individual, there is no guarantee that a social media platform identifies the Twitter or whatever handle with an actual human being that is not anonymous. And so we would be, in theory, potentially responding to completely anonymous Twitter handles, not knowing what we were engaging with or others. And so when we think about that, it could come up. The two-day thing has already been, mentioned is problematic. Again, I appreciate words like the open, but two days for when we start talking about very small staffs that are, for anyone. But I mean, I want you to think about a city of 100 people that has a part-time clerk that already has plenty to work on. If you'd like to, to find out, ask them about the torture I put them through with the American Rescue Plan, and, and they'll tell you they've got more than enough on their plate. Looking at that two-day turnaround can be pretty problematic. Another additional thing, as we're talking about this going out, one area we saw that the public may need additional information, is that this is not the, the final contact to that member of the public, which means you are going to receive that record. This is an acknowledgement that your records request has been received. So if that member of the public is not monitoring whatever email address they gave us for the potential fees that may be associated, for the narrowing of the scope that may be needed in order to determine what is they're looking for, that could be confusing to a member of the public who thinks, well, I got my acknowledgement, where's my record? Well, no, there was follow-up, you need to monitor. The process doesn't end here. And I think one thing I would just point out, it's not related to your rules, but this isn't a legislative forum. One of the reasons we are all so concerned about an additional burden that gets placed, is we see efforts from the legislature each year to, to kind of reduce or remove the ability to charge for the processing of these records requests. And so we're already under potential financial constraints and then things like this, it certainly enhances us. My final comment that I'd make and then happy to answer to questions is, again, just to conclude on the social media and by other means, we think that that opens things up in a way that will be more confusing to the public, create a lot of complaints about, well, they didn't respond to this. I was going to use the example of, what if it says, you post something trying to be an outreach to the public, hey, here's what we did. There was a great park event. We had, I, I just did one in West Des Moines. They had cops and bobbers, or my children learned how to fish from an officer in West Des Moines. Well, how much did that cost? Is that an open records request? I mean, that's a, a real question of what needs to be included in a records request and how do we make sure that that's delivered to the local government in a way that is understandable. And so I think there could be some value long-term in coming up with consistency and what an open records request should look like. That, while it seems like it puts parameters, can actually create ease for the public if they know, here's the form, this is what you need to fill out, this is the information that is required to be provided, and it is not otherwise. And then also, we think the broadening of channels to submit those, while I understand the idea to increase the availability for the public to do so, again, I think it creates more confusion and will lead to more problems, both for Iowa Public Information Board, as well as the cities that have to come forward and say, we didn't even know we had a Twitter, which, we have multiple cities in the state that set up a social media account when you need it to, or entities that are reserving it because they don't want somebody else to take the Clyde Facebook handle or whatever it may be. And so they're not actively monitoring these in a way that they'd be able to respond within two days. So we, we see that as a very problematic opening that will create nothing but confusion for the public and doesn't really serve them in an ease way that helps them much. That would be the final.
I have to answer any questions? One of the thought up I made that generated something in my mind, when you're talking about social media accounts, keep in mind that cities that do have people that do this, we have a coordinator, a communications director in our city. The person that held that role left. It took us a month to get that account switched over because it was texting to her phone, you got to get it within five minutes, we had to schedule it with her. And so that right there is going to open a door where we don't even get it because it's not, we don't, didn't know we had it, it's because we can't access it.
And we, we see that problem too, even with small cities and changing their email address and changing the city clerk. And she knew all the passwords and now nobody knows the passwords and that's a problem that we do see. Robert, for you, when you say business versus working days, how would you define working days?
So if you put business days, I think our general understanding is that we're talking Monday through Friday excluding a holiday. When we look at working days, and I, I threw that out there to show you the contrast, if I have a clerk who works for two hours on a Tuesday, and the city has stated working hours of when that clerk is available, if we said two working days and the city has posted that they work every Tuesday and city hall is open, then we would consider, and I'm not telling you to adopt it, I'm trying to highlight the, the difficulty in doing it. Business days of two is too short for that individual who works one day a week. So if you move to 10 days or something of that nature, now you at least have two weeks included, which in a way would be two working days for that city. So you could either do a 10 days, which we ensure, you know, allows for enough time to have two working days within it, or two working days if you had to stick with two, because then it's when that city is functionally open and operational. Because, I, I mean, we have cities, I, I'm sure you're aware, but I mean, they are on limited hours, limited staff, clerks are shared with seven other communities. This is a common occurrence, not, you know, we, we only have a, a small number of communities that are above 10,000 population. So when you start to tick down. So that's what I meant by working versus.
There is a part of the statute though that says that you need to have 30 hours.
30 hours of employment in there?
No, that you have to, it says if you don't have, that actually talks about when records can be available. And so it, it does kind of, kind of make that not really what you should be doing.
So I, and I, I will need to go to reference exactly what you're talking about. I would say that if, if something enforceable is brought up that would require communities across the state to have a clerk in their office for an extended number of hours, we're going to have to have a legislative conversation, because quite frankly, if you think property taxes in small communities are bad now, wait until they have to add staff. And we're also having the same hiring difficulties. And so if we're looking to enforce and expand the hours of small communities, I, I think that will end up being more problematic.
22.5.
May I say something?
You said 22.5 enforcement of rights?
What we're doing is we're going around the room and having people share in order. If you have something that's germane to the conversation right now, you can pipe in.
Yes, actually I do. My name's Mary. I'm with some newspapers in Northwest Iowa. I deal with lots and lots of communities and for the most part, there's not any issues. The clerks I deal with, the mayors, the city council people generally are superb. I agree with the social media concerns. I, I.
Sorry, Mary. Do you have any comments, just specifically on the, the working hours of small-town clerks?
Um, I think it's a very valid concern. And yeah, I think there's some ways to work around it. I'm fine with working days, but I also would question how much of a workload those small-town clerks would have regularly. When you hit budget time or audit time, I understand their workload increases just by the nature of the beast, but to find the bills from last month or the minutes from a year ago, it usually wouldn't be a problem. There are some exceptions where I think IPIB has demonstrated, at least as I access the services, tend to give those municipalities a little leeway when they need it. And I don't know that most people reasonably, reasonable people I don't see would have a problem with understanding, you know, it's going to take a little extra time because I have to dig or because I'm new at this job and I have to figure out where these files are, you know, the things that everybody's expressed here. I think, not always, but quite often, at least in, in the public records, usually common sense and reasonableness can prevail. And I think in, in the case of small city clerks and their workload and the, the times that they work, it, reasonableness can pre, does prevail. It, it should be, you know, there's, there's a world of words that the law can use, like when practicable or whatever. But I, I think generally with the really smaller communities, I'd be very cautious about overblowing what their workloads really, really are all of the time.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. I have a couple more questions for Robert.
Yeah.
Just so I'm clear, you're not suggest, are you suggesting working days as terminology? Or are you using that as an example to say, we need maybe 10 business days?
Yeah, I would use that as an example, that two days is too short for those communities.
Okay.
And I do think that, while I respect the, the speaker on those comments, and we do represent, we have the Iowa Clerks Association, and, and so we'd be happy to get the opinion of directly from some small-city clerks. I don't think we should be passing rules with different timelines of the year being where it's a different standard. This needs to work all year long and with the understanding. And I think that we've seen from the American Rescue Plan, the CARES Act, and some of the stuff we've just gone through, working directly with those clerks, the, the pace of their work can change very quickly in a given year depending on what's going on. And so, you know, that, but no, I, I, I suggested working days as an illustration of how you could look at it alternatively, if you had to go with two business days. To illustrate the two business days is likely too short.
Okay. I, I understand what you're saying now. One more question for you, Robert. You mentioned the, after the letters opened or after the emails opened, that's some language we've gotten some pushback on. I've talked to a couple other people about that, just because it's hard to know when is a letter opened, or when is an email opened. You know, we, we know when a phone call is received, we can show when a fax is printed off from the machine, but opened can be a little bit unclear. So did you have any thoughts about that, or were you more thinking kind of acknowledgement that somebody might not be able to get to it the second that the mail arrives?
You have cities that do not check the mail every single day of the week, that do not have a clerk who goes to their city every day of the week. And so when I see a word like open, the reason I found that that was, I thought, okay, that's more reasonable, is that understands the working capacity of the community, when their employee is there and able to process things, and that's when they would open it. So I can certainly see how, you know, we could look at bad actors and say, well, what if they opened it and they didn't want to respond right away. But we could also look at it that if they mail this on, and the mail is received Monday at 5, right, and then say that person has picked up the mail from the previous week on Monday, then they won't get to that mail until the next Monday. And so the reality of having where certain city staff is only working one day a week, is where I look at that and say the opened. If, if you do it received, then is that received into the post office mailbox? And now the data started, but nobody has gotten to it. That, that's how we looked at open. So I can understand how, how some, you know, if you wanted to make it so that things happen more quickly. Where we have to push the realization, that's why a lot I focused on early, setting the population threshold, is the majority of cities in this state, the procedures and administration they go through is often overlooked when producing rules or comments, because they don't have the, the variety of staff that other cities may. They're very, very small operations.
And Robert, that's, we had like two or three meetings where we specifically talked about opened as to try to guard against the fact that some people didn't have staff in there full-time. And that's why we said, didn't say received, but said.
Right. And I'm appreciative of the thoughtfulness that that took to get there. So that's why we see it as being reasonable. And again, thank you in the, in the onset for that, that contemplation that would have led to, and it seems to recognize what we deal with in the smaller communities.
Alex?
Thank you, Ms. Forth. Alex Cucci with the Iowa Association of Municipal Utilities. We are a statewide association with over 750 municipal utilities across the state that are built of telecom, water, gas, and electric utilities. They range in size from Des Moines Water Works at half a million customers and being served, to municipal utilities which are serving 100 customers. And there's an additional wrinkle that we also have in that some of the municipal utilities are actually governed by an independent board of trustees and set up as an independent organization within the city itself. So we're going to have a lot of the same concerns that have been voiced by the groups around the table, specifically also those that the league have about the diversity of the membership and the size and sophistication of those different utilities. A couple points that I want to make is we're appreciative of, you know, the decision to hold a oral presentation, or oral hearing on this, and, and the work that the board has done on this, a couple suggested revisions that, that we would make. First, I think there's kind of an interesting threshold question associated with jurisdiction. And, and it's something that I'm kind of unclear about. It's the interplay between 22.11, 22.12, and the IPIP's actually authority. IPIP vested with the authority to oversee 22, and then municipal utilities, or municipalities having the exemption in 22.12 from the requirements of 22.11, which include the procedures for providing the public with access to, to public records. Public subdivisions in, in 22.12 are not required to have procedures that are in place like the state, but if they, they do, they've got a certain process to follow in order to adopt them. It seems to me that maybe sub-rule or proposed rule 11.2 seems to move into issues of, of articulating the procedure for providing the public with access to public records. And so the interplay of those statutes and who's preempted by what is a little bit confusing to me. But if the, if IPIP decides that does have jurisdiction in, in that area and that's a proper area to promulgate rules, our, our suggestions would be, one of the areas, in addition to the concerns that were kind of raised earlier, would be maybe defining a, a business day as a solution to some of the concerns that were, were addressed. There's already a definition in Iowa code at 20, or 252. There's already a definition in Iowa code at 200, or 252. G1. That's a central employee registry define a business day as a day which state offices are open for regular business. So a definition, that would be more appropriate for political subdivisions being something that is any day in which the governmental bodies, public offices are open for business may help clarify that ambiguity, which at least some of our members have addressed, have raised as potential issue that they didn't understand, and provide them some guidance and also members of the public noting that they, on the city utility side, much like the city side, whether it's a city clerk or it's a utility clerk, they may not be working every single day of the week, and offices actually may not be open every single day of the week. So addressing that with a definition is something that we think might be helpful. Also, you know, noting the comments that have been raised in regards to the concerns with the social media provisions of 11.2, Sub-1 Paragraph E. I think most people have hit those on the head pretty well, and I won't repeat a lot of them. I'll just note that for us, we don't always use social media, especially from the smaller utility size, as a bidirectional form of communicating information. We push some information out from there, but we don't necessarily receive it. Those accounts may not be staffed, and they certainly may not be staffed with the public information officer, or they also certainly, they may not actually have a clear association with the utility. It may be something that someone in the community has developed, whether that be a spouse or a relative, in order to provide some public support or public PR support for the utility in some way or another. So we're concerned with that requirement. We would hope that the board consider removing it. I think the concerns about comments on Facebook posts were some of the things that we hadn't considered, but we definitely take to heart. But we're even concerned with direct, you know, communications, whether that be messaging of some manner in which it's a, not a public communication that's going through and for everyone on the forum to view. That would probably be a problem for us if it's not staffed or if it's something that isn't well-connected with the utility. So those are our comments that we have in regards to this, and thank you for the opportunity to provide them.
Yeah, thank you, Alex. Alan, are you still on the line?
Can you give up on Robert?
Alan.
I am.
Are you, would you like to make some comments?
No, I'm fine with the comments that Robert made.
Oh, perfect, right. Christine Hirschberger.
Good afternoon. You know, I think the comments that Iowa State Association of Counties made have already been discussed here. You know, I will say that counties are not particularly different than cities or municipal utilities in this situation in terms of staffing concerns. You know, I think the example I would give for counties, but I'm sure other entities have similar ones, would be the auditor's office. If they are in the middle of an election, there's a lot of deadlines involved in that. And at the same time, that's probably a time that they may be receiving a lot of records requests, and so it's just a matter of whether or not they have the staff and the resources to respond in that short timeframe when they have other deadlines that are also a short timeframe. You know, there's lots of other examples, but that's just the one that I would kind of highlight that is a bit specific to counties.
Do you have any other further comments?
Alex, have we submitted some written comments in conjunction with the Iowa County Attorneys Association? I think most of those points have been hit on here, so I won't discuss them any further unless you have any questions for me.
I don't believe I do, and I do have your comments. So...
Thank you so much for the opportunity to comment.
You're welcome. Thank you for providing us with these comments. Susie Neering.
Thank you. I submitted some written comments that really go to the legal issue that was discussed earlier regarding the scope of authority. I have some concerns that the, because of the structure of Chapter 22, that particularly the acknowledgement rule falls outside of the scope of delegated authority for IPIP. I appreciate the desire to have some point to sort of, to get the ball rolling when folks aren't talking with one another, but I'm concerned about moving into this realm of trying to nail down the acknowledgement for all the reasons that have been discussed today. From the perspective of a county attorney who works in a sort of a medium-sized jurisdiction, we have some of the problems that are, go along with a large jurisdiction, as well as advising some of the very small entities that are responsible under the open records rules. Although we are not statutorily required in Johnson County, we do provide advice for our township trustees. And I can tell you in my interaction with those folks, we try really hard to get education out there, but we frequently, we'll have some folks that are in their, who are in their 80s who have been doing this for the last 30 years, who may actually not even have email addresses. The township trustees meet on a periodic basis. They don't even maintain business hours, they don't have an office location. This also, this rule extends to boards and commissions, in particular the county level. We have quite a few boards and commissions that meet, some of which are set out by statute, others of which are actually composed primarily of volunteers. They may or may not have a staff person that's meeting with them. And the whole question, who really even is the lawful custodian of the records? For those folks who are involved at those levels where they're not reporting to an office every day in connection with their governmental body responsibilities, that really creates quite a bit of confusion. When we're talking about the issue here today about when is a letter opened? Well, a public record request would be valid even if it wasn't delivered to the custodian of the record. But somebody else in one of these other entities may receive, may actually receive it. They may even open in an office, they may even open the letter, but it may take some time for it to actually get to the custodian of records. And then the question is, how would you even document how, when it arrived under those circumstances? However, if somebody feels aggrieved by this, then they can go ahead and say, well, they didn't, you know, they just know no one responded to them for X number of days, but they don't know when it was that that actually arrived at the custodian of records, or even if it did. So those kind of issues create a certain amount of confusion about this, and I also am very concerned about the comments that were made earlier regarding the fact that there is even, the legislature is curbing the ability to charge any fee, you know, sort of really restricting the amount of fees that can be charged for the expenses associated with this. Creating an acknowledgement request for every single record request would mean that if somebody came to actually where there was an office and asked for a record and it was turned over to them on the spot, you would actually also have to hand them a written acknowledgement. And that just seems illogical. It, I would recommend that, you know, even though I, I think this whole, I'm concerned that this acknowledgement requirement exceeds the scope of what the statute permits, that making it only be, having a longer window and saying that it's not required if the records are provided prior to that window, the end of that window. So if the, you know, saying something along the lines that a government body is encouraged to or should try to provide timely acknowledgement of a record request, if fulfillment of the request is anticipated to take longer than 10 business days, might be one possible way of phrasing that. But it also needs to be very specific about, you know, what would be sufficient contact information to get back ahold of somebody? And I think it should also, would also, I would also recommend that there be something that explicitly says that actual fulfillment of the record request within an appropriate period of time would preclude any kind of enforcement action about this. Even though the board may decide that it would provide some, you know, a reasonableness standard, as written, this rule doesn't provide any kind of reasonableness standard. And that means anybody who wanted to cause problems for a, for any governmental body that didn't meet these requirements, little tiny ones or biggest ones, and like Polk County, which receives thousands and thousands of requests on a weekly basis, they could simply say, oh, well, I got my record, but I never got that acknowledgement. And under the, you know, the rules there can be, you know, they could bring an action asking for consequences. And if you look at the way it's written with this strict liability construction of this rule, I don't know that there's really much of a basis for not implying those consequences. I think that maybe you argue that that's not going to happen, but then if you start doing it based on a case-by-case basis, like, well, did they make a good effort? But there's no such standard written in there, then you have an issue of unfair and, you know, you don't have a consistent application of the rule. So I have a lot of concerns about a rule being put in place that creates that kind of problem. Certainly echo all of the concerns about the social media. That's an enormous, that's an enormous expansion with no definition. And certainly, I think everybody has acknowledged that would be a major issue. The other issue that I wanted to particularly take note of, which I included in my written comments and hasn't been addressed by anybody else, is one of my rules, is particularly in reviewing open records for confidentiality issues. In the list of items included in 11, 11.6, factors affecting timely compliance, there's no, it's not even mentioned in that section regarding trying to provide for redaction, trying to address redaction issues related to confidentiality, particularly in situations where you have a large record request that contains confidential information that's embedded. And those are by far the ones that take the most time to address. And at this, I don't think that falls within four is the unforeseen circumstances based on retrieving the records, but this is a little bit different issue. And it's not listed there at all. I think the language in 11.6 also could possibly be interpreted to be that, you know, this is a list of factors that could, that, it doesn't say that could be considered, or it just says may be considered, but I think that it is not clear that these are just some that you could look at. It really seems to suggest that this is the list of allowable factors, and I think I would highly recommend that if the intent is just to provide some guidance, that the language make it clear that those are just some factors and not a limited and exclusive list. And if it was going to be a non-exclusive list, I would hope that it would also be amended to include some aspect of trying to, the complexity of the analysis for the purposes of protecting confidential records. So thank you very much. I appreciate the process for being able to make comments today.
All right, thank you, Susie, for your comments. Mary, we're running a little bit over time. Do you have any other brief comments that have not been touched upon?
Forgive me, I wasn't able to hear all of it between fat fingers and technology. And being alone in my office, I had to take some escapes there, so forgive me. I listened to a lot of the comments about social media, and I agree with you that you shouldn't, there should be some language somewhere that prohibits requests via social media. I don't think social media needs that kind of legitimacy for doing business transactions. I think in part, those things are more about PR and fun and entertainment rather than conducting business. As a media person, I can't believe there's nobody from INA. there or some other media folks, but I'm fine, I think it would be, it would help everybody to eliminate social media as an option for that kind of business communication. There's a lot of things I heard today that, because I do operate mostly in a rural area, did not consider for the other side of the state or the other parts of municipalities that are larger. And again, as I've said, most of my dealings with public records and governing bodies has been no issues whatsoever. Every now and then I run into some problems. But as far as these changes, and I do want to, most of the people that I've heard speak today represent the municipalities, and somewhere, as this was coming out, I read that some of the inspiration behind this was the use of charges for public records as a prohibitive practice to try to get people to not make requests. And I would agree with that wholeheartedly. It's been my experience in a couple of cases where I feel like charging for records were being put at a number just to make me go away. In some cases, it worked, and I don't think that's right. But I do agree that it's fair to, for significant research, that it, there's, there is some, that it's appropriate to charge a fair price, an actual cost price, but not, well, you know, we think it's going to take 18 hours and this person makes...
Sorry, I don't want to interrupt you here, but that's not something that we're discussing here with this rule.
I thought that was part of the rules, the charges, sorry. Wow.
Yeah, that's a new statute that became effective on July 1st, but that's not kind of the subject of what we're talking about today. So any other brief comments?
Then I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. I'm going to go ahead and end the call, but I wanted to thank everybody for taking the time to come down and discuss these with us. It was really, truly helpful, and hopefully we can go back to the board and come up with some new ideas and come up with something that works a little better. So thank you again.
I just want to give a compliment on the level of consideration hosting this meeting and putting thought into it.
Thank you.
So absolutely.
Thank you.
Can I grab you? Okay.
Yeah.
I have not, I have not even thought about the jurisdictional stuff with the municipalities. So...
I just started looking at it today. I...